Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Monday, May nineteenth. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms.
Here.
Please join me in the Blood of Allegiance.
Blood allegiance.
To the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic with a wish of saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. Well, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Libby.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item three, presentation from the Iowa Bicycle Coalition.
You can just. Come on up, Katie.
Yay.
And just stand here, but thank you.
Thank you for allowing me. This is working. Are you communicating with? Thank you for having us today. We appreciate the city of Windsor Heights welcoming us in here and recognizing May as Bike Month. We appreciate your support. The Iowa Bicycle Coalition is a statewide nonprofit dedicated to bike safety, advocacy, and education. We work to promote safe transportation laws and helped pass the crosswalk protections last year, crosswalk protections bill last year, as well as a hands-free driving bill this past session to help reduce distracted driving. As I mentioned, we're all about safe, accessible, and enjoyable cycling here in Iowa. Recently, we conducted a study on decanizing and health impacts of cycling materials here in Iowa. Sarah Clicker, you should.
Adam.
Looking at him.
Adam.
Thank you. So we conducted a study to help quantify these impacts. We brought together a coalition of over forty partner organizations from trail associations, city governments, planning agencies, and other nonprofits, all joined together with interested state in this data that we are working on. We've had some federal data from the CDC, from the Bureau of Economic Analysis, and the U.S. Census Bureau. And so the top line number we found in this study is that cycling and trails generated one point four billion dollars for Iowa's economy. And this number is based off an estimated nine hundred thousand annual riders. So nine hundred thousand people in Iowa pick up their bike and ride at least some point within the year. And it also found that cycling is a top fifty industry here in Iowa, just showing how valuable it is for our local economies. And we also like to mention that Iowa is the world capital of trails, as we like to say, with being home to over two thousand multi-use trails through the state. And this kind of messaging was developed alongside the Iowa Economic Development Authority, just to promote tourism here to Iowa and help support quality of life and workforce retention. On that note, twenty-one thousand Iowa jobs are supported by cycling, and this Iowa's riders generate six hundred and ninety million dollars in wages, with two twenty-three million in state income taxes and eleven million per year in sales tax. So these impacts relate to tourism as well, bringing in thirteen million dollars to Iowa's economy, with arts, entertainment, and recreation being the largest sector, real estate rental and leasing being next, and finance and insurance also being supported. And the study also helped quantify the health impacts of cycling and trails, and we found that cyclists are forty-nine percent less likely to have poor mental health. We find this to be a really compelling statistic and a good motivator to prompt investment in our trails is that investing in trails is investing in mental health. And some other stats that we found is that active cycling decreases breast cancerous by twenty-eight percent. And all these stats have associated economic value with them as well. So when three hundred, or sorry, nine thousand fewer Iowans with obesity, and then we found that this prevents twenty-five million in medical expenses. So not only is it reducing those health complications, it's also saving taxpayers' dollars. Cyclists are seventy-seven percent less likely to have colorectal cancer, another statistic it found. And cyclists are twenty-five percent less likely to have AIDS. So this prevents twenty-five million spent on treatment as well. It's another facet of what we're all about is bike safety, as I alluded to earlier. So we helped get the crosswalk protections bill signed law back in twenty twenty-four, and this filled a gap in Iowa code that previously had classified protections for those in crosswalks, for those physically on two feet, so people in wheelchairs, on scooters, mobility devices, bikes, you name it, didn't have the same protections as someone physically on two foot, on two feet, and so this was signed into law last year. And the hands-free driving bill was passed just this past April, and this bill requires phone use to be in Bluetooth or hands-free mode and attempts to reduce distracted driving. Some other opportunities to work with Coalition, Bike to Work Week was last, last week in May. May is recognized as Bike Month, and anytime within that month, we love to see people biking toward, but I believe the city also recognized Bike to Work Day. The Coalition also hosts a Safe Drops to School program, which encourages kids to walk or bike to school. And every May and October, we have Walk Bike Roll Day, so local schools and communities can host an event to encourage kids to walk or bike to school. And anytime within the month of May, if a school participates, it counts to our annual total. And our Safe Drops to School Coordinator brought together a hundred and thirty schools in Iowa this past May, so it was great to see all that collaboration. Yep, so this happens again in October. So if you have kids in a school district or know someone or have some connections, we would love to work with them, to be introduced with them, and to encourage more of these walk bike roll events. And the Iowa Bicycle Coalition also works with the Great American Road Trail Project, as that's going through Iowa, and we are just helping them advocate for the completion of this trail. So other opportunities with this study is we are moving on to phase two to get county level results for all ninety-nine counties here in Iowa, and we recently secured a grant from the Iowa DOT for this. And so the full results of this study can be found on our website at iowabicyclecoalition.org. Let's open it up. Any questions?
When was the study done again?
It was released in January of.
Yes, thank you.
It was previously done in two thousand twelve.
Correct.
And economic impact. Number value there was about three hundred and sixty million, so with one point four billion this year, I think it helps us speak to the growth of trails here in Iowa.
I'm looking at that twenty-twelve study. And yeah, it's quite an impact.
Like, there isn't a thing there in Iowa.
Nice. Well, Katie, I really appreciate you coming and sharing this, and obviously, we are right in the heart, in the middle of the trail system here in the metro, just like we are for DART and everything else. And so it's great to be in there and to be connected. As I'm sure you know, we also have the B-cycle Station as well, and so it connects so well with our, the events and activities that we try to promote, especially with Colby Park being right on the trail and having the bike system or the Bcycle Station there as well. So I'm just glad that you were able to come and share. I think this is one of the things that we're, you know, obviously, our trail system is already here, but we know that the more that it connects throughout the state and, you know, through other parts, especially now that it's the High Trestle has been connected out otherwise, and completing that loop. What is, is that the great, that's not the Great Western? Raccoon River, thank you. Sorry, I was drawing a blank. But so with that being connected and finished, and now connecting that back to the metro and that sort of thing, it's really incredible to, to see all of that development and then, you know, bringing and feeding especially folks that are in rural communities. It gives them a chance to come bike into the city as well. So thanks for all of your work. It's really impressive and definitely a huge economic engine for our state, so.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be here and speak on this, and thank you to the city of Windsor Heights for your continued support of cycling and trails and safe transportation.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay, consideration of the proclamation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes. Yes.
We want to do a picture.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I turned on, you're the one asking.
I don't know.
Properly.
Stand back.
I think they get to keep that, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. In example, we want to display. Oh, yes, we'll take it out.
One of those LED billboards would be nice.
Yeah. Windsor Heights is the best.
We were all gonna ride our bikes here tonight, but the weather didn't allow it.
All right, item four, public hearing on the disposal of real estate at seventy-seven eleven Maryland Drive.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. And Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
Any public comment related to this item? Motion to close.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
For a consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-three-nine, a resolution related to disposal of said real estate.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
And five, public hearing on the disposal of real estate at seventy-eight eleven Maryland Drive.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Any public comment on this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Five A, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-forty, resolution related to disposal of said property.
Let's move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from council?
Wash, rents, repeat.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And six, public hearing on the disposal of real estate at seventy-eight seventeen Maryland Drive.
Move to open public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Any public comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Six A, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-forty-one, a resolution related to disposal of said property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item seven, public hearing on the disposal of real estate at seventy-nine oh one Maryland Drive.
Move to approve, or move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Any public comment on this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item seven A, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-forty-two, a resolution related to the disposal of said property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from council?
Adam Plaguey and city staff and Aaron and Bolton and Mink for helping create this process, identify the risk and finding kind of that win-win solution for everybody, because I think that there was like thirty-five ways this could have gone terribly, and a couple of ways that it could go great, and this is one of the ways that it could go great. So thank you to everybody involved.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones. Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
And a May, public hearing on FY twenty-five budget amendment.
Move to approve and public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
AJ or Rochelle?
Oh, it's a person. It's Joseph's on.
Thank you.
Your finance director. We're doing a budget amendment. I just wanted to be clear that there is no area of our budget that is in a negative in any way, shape, or form yet. But with May, June being storm-related, we just don't know. I just want to be sure that we don't end up negative, so that's why we are doing this budget amendment. And from the expenses side, we're adding about ten thousand, we're adding ten thousand dollars to the IT services. This is our managed service provider change, and this, we aren't, we aren't there yet, but it's possible that we could go over by a little bit this year. We are adding eighty-five thousand to engineering and planning services, and this is definitely because of the high volume of development projects. And this one, we probably will go over, but the fees do get paid back to the city, so. Legal services, we're going, we're adding about twenty-five thousand, and this is because of the ATE litigation that wasn't budgeted for. In economic development, we're adding a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty, and this is the purchase of that property, and then the approvals that went along with that. In public works, we're adding thirty-five thousand dollars to forestry line, and this was mainly due, we did get six thousand dollars in grants, mainly due to those, that large tree removal along Hickman, and then there's other projects that are gonna happen in Colby Park, a lot, a large tree trimming, and then you never know with storms. The enterprise fund for garbage, eighty-five thousand dollars, this is number one, due to storm plan last July for the tornado, and then any May-June event that could hurt. And then that's a four hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and five hundred and twenty dollars total expenditures, and then our transfers in and transfers out did change as well, and that has to do with basically all the things that are happening with these, with this movement, but also there were some things that we needed to transfer that weren't, wasn't budgeted for specifically three hundred and some odd thousand, I'm sorry, I haven't brought any, three hundred plus thousand from the radios, three hundred and thirteen thousand for the radios, for the police, that had to be, has to be moved to the CIP, because that's where it was spent out of, and that transfer wasn't budgeted for, so that's why your transfers in has changed a little bit. But that's it.
So Rochelle, what will be our total additional, I know you can't really answer this, but that's four hundred and twelve more than we budgeted in FY twenty-five. And so, but with transfers and back, I don't want to say call it backfills and that sort of thing, what number, what portion of this number will be, has the potential to be actual spend? Like, won't, won't be either repaid back, but we will be spending it.
My guess is probably seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. That would be my max, unless we have some sort of huge storm damage. That would be the only thing that I would guess. But I just like to cover things. I just want to be sure that we don't, we just get dinged on the audit or over budget, and I don't, I don't want to do that, so. Any other questions?
Oh, very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any public comment on this proposed budget amendment? Motion to close.
But moves.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Eight A, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-forty-three, a resolution approving the FY twenty-five budget amendment.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion from councils? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Nine, public forum. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Ben, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
You voted on it.
What? Oh, wait, I thought you were saying that you were removing it, though.
I, you. You voted, you voted to approve the agenda.
Does the mayor not set the agenda?
I thought that the email said that we were removing, and so I just didn't.
I think that's what I would.
Would like to.
So, motion to remove I from the consent agenda and approve?
It wasn't a trick. Is that true, man?
Well, the one that I have is not going by, I was just trying to pull up. This is not the same agenda that I have in my packet that, because it's not doing the same numbers that you're doing. So I don't know, like, when you say, like, five A or whatever, oh, I guess you are doing five A here, but I just thought, no, this is the right. But I just, I would like to change my vote then on what I said.
Well, what, what is the issue? I missed, I missed an email.
Removing ten I from the consent agenda.
Okay.
For later consideration.
Right.
So motion to approve the agenda.
Minus.
Minus.
Well, so how about do this? So I made the motion to do the, let's, actually, I think we have to finish this vote, right?
You have to reconsider it.
Re- reconsider this vote.
Yeah.
So.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Okay.
Well, did we finish the vote? Hold on.
We didn't.
Finished the vote.
Was it?
And we're, and we're currently voting on approving the agenda.
Consent agenda.
Right. Okay, so then I will say no.
And I'll say yes. And then, because you said no, you can do a motion for reconsideration of the, the vote.
Okay, motion to reconsider the vote on ten, the consent agenda.
Second.
Now I'll move to approve it. So I'll move to approve it without item I, and item I for separate consideration.
And I'll second that.
Good enough, Rebecca.
Is that okay, Aaron?
Um. You need a vote on the motion to reconsider.
Oh, shoot, okay.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
No.
Now, motion to consider the consent agenda minus item I. Remove that for separate consideration.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Item I.
Move to approve. I don't know what the issue is.
So instead of setting, so the consent agenda items that approve resolutions, setting a public hearing on the lease, we feel I think that we should consider more options than just the one option before we move to public hearing. So I do not think that we should set a public hearing just yet, so I don't think we need to take any action on I, because it's just setting a public hearing.
If you don't want to set the public hearing, that would be correct.
Okay, yeah, so I would say we don't need to, we're not ready yet for a public hearing. I think we've got a little bit.
Second that then, or are we just?
No, you just wouldn't take any action on, if that's the consensus of the council, I mean, I.
Believe I do.
Yes.
So I need to be caught up to speed on this, so I'm sorry if I missed my emails today, so. Or.
Um, just, we're moving awfully quickly, and we've only really had serious conversations with one group. Initially, we talked to LSI, and they're unable to support it, then we've talked to CISS, and but.
Central Iowa Shelter and Services.
Thank you, but also there's, there's a lot of nonprofits that are doing similar housing work that we should, we should make sure that we're considering all of our options, or being fair to the different options, and making sure that they have the infrastructure to support their commitment as well. So a little more due diligence on our part in keeping, maybe it's RFP, maybe it's.
Just a general comment, I guess, KP and I knocked on neighboring doors, I believe it was last Friday. We spoke with one resident to the south, didn't have any strong feelings one way or another. Got a call back from another resident shortly after we left the materials. He expressed some concerns, said that he might come and weigh in at some point in the future, public hearing on it, but was still digesting the information. We have not heard back from any other neighbors at this point. We left them the information on the Ferguson House proposal, as well as some information on our comprehensive plan that outlines that potential transitional read, transition housing area from its current single family to potential multi-use in the future, so. That's the current status. We've heard from two of about the seven folks, doors that we knocked.
I would just feel a little bit more comfortable, too, if we had a little bit more resident input on this, since we saw some of the issues, well, we didn't, per se. But there's been some issues when things have come into the town, and I just want to make sure that we are able to mitigate or at least devise ways that we can help the residents not be so concerned and still accomplish the goal, too, so.
Does council have specific action you'd like administration staff to move forward with as far as soliciting additional interest, working harder to get additional neighbor inputs? We can, we can do an RFP for general solicitation, if you'd like, with perhaps the terms that we discussed with CISS previously, which is a reminder was a two-year lease on the house at one dollar, with the leasing being responsible for maintenance of the property. And the yeah, those were the, I think, the main parameters of it. They're responsible for the leasing of it, the maintenance of it, the continuation of the rental certificate, which does expire this month. And then the city reserves the right to either continue that agreement after that two-year period or move forward with demolition and prepare for redevelopment. And what's the cleanest way to do this? Would it be an RFP? Yeah, I guess the background is, is when Lutheran Services of Iowa, who originally proposed when we were talking about purchasing the property, indicated they're no longer interested due to the change in immigration policy. I just started generally calling folks in similar spheres that might have a need for some sort of temporary housing status. CISS was the one that responded to solicitation of my call of, do you know anybody, or are you interested in potentially utilizing this property? I did not hear back affirmatively with anybody else at that point, but I can't say that I exhaustively called every organization out there. I basically did a Google search and asked a few people I knew and said, hey, who should I contact on this? So could be more diligent on it, certainly. We have one interested party presently, but there could, could be other interested parties as well.
To be clear, I, I think that you've taken appropriate action so far. I don't think that there's been any reckless behavior or anything. I think that, you know, us taking a little bit more time to move forward on it is probably in the best interest for, for everybody. And, you know, making sure that whatever organization has, like, the infrastructure, the. And, um, you know, making sure that whatever organization has, like the infrastructure, the policy, the training, whatever it is, that, you know, that this isn't a brand new model for them, that they're trying to, you know, I don't know. But I think before we set the public hearing, that we should allow just a little bit more time and, you know, maybe not saying that we don't move forward with this, with this group, but just, we, we don't need to rush to, to get done just yet.
Simply explore other options.
Or just keeping options open, not even, not even directing that we need to explore other options, but just keeping options open so far. So I think, I don't know. I don't, I guess I don't know what to tell you for the next steps. Sorry.
So what timeframe then? Or I, 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 too, would, you know, what are, what, so if you want, then I think we have to give Adam some direction that says, you know, whether it's an RFP or the timeframe or whatever, so we're not just, this isn't just sitting on the table, like, let's have a plan.
I think if we put out the RFQ or RFP or whatever, that would be, that would be a good first step to see, you know, if there's anybody else that is looking at this ac- across the board. That would be a good first step and have a, you know, maybe in a month, we could have the results from everybody, or maybe, I don't, I don't know, you know, if it's two weeks and then a little bit of time to, to go through, since this is going to be a holiday week next week, you know, kind of got to take that out. But, um, you know, give a reasonable amount of time for people to, to review it and give information back to us, and then move on to the next step. So I would, I mean, I, I don't want to ha- have this hanging either, you know. Hopefully, we can have this accomplished in two or three months and, and have know where we're heading by then.
When you say the rental certificate expired?
I believe it's in May, and so I'd have to go back and look what our agreement is with our inspecting agency, Safe Building. The, the house is predated, so it's, it's originally a single-family house. It was converted into a duplex, so there's non-conformities. There is some time period, and Aaron, I don't know if you recall this offhand, but at some point, if it's a non-continued use, if it goes back into a duplex status, it would have to become conforming. And so there's a few pieces, such as fire escapes. Maybe some other pieces that I'm not intimately familiar with that could fall out of compliance if it does stay vacant for too long. So that's something to consider, but just potentially a reason we'd want to move forward fairly quickly with an RFP or an RFQ and bring it back probably in June. But I can, I could follow up on that. It's the route we want to go.
Can you get us those, can you get council those answers as far as that timeframe goes? And then I think it sounds like probably the preference might be putting together kind of a term sheet as far as, you know, what, what looking for in an agreement as a hypothetical or, you know, potential RFP to put out there based upon what that timeframe might be?
Yeah, I think that would work, and we actually have, um, I haven't sent it to Adam yet, but we actually have the draft lease ready to go, so we could maybe include that as the term sheet, so they could kind of see what the expectation would be. Adam's probably going to need some direction about where you want, like who you want to solicit responses from, or where you would like him to send those, what types of, of entities. Just, they're not going to be looking for it. So it's not like a public project where they're, they're actively seeking out. They're probably not going to know it exists unless we send it to them. So if there's feedback about other agencies, that would probably be helpful.
So can we get you a list by the end of this week of anyone that would like to be included on receiving that? Let's see, doable for council?
Well, we phrase it as a request for information. You can provide me any parties you think might be appropriate or interested in it. We can informally get those inquiries out to see who would respond to us. And then we can be able to turn this back out quickly. Otherwise, we'd be waiting for another city council meeting to issue some sort of an RFQ or an RFP. At least we can come back and have an informed conversation about a more exhaustive list of who, if anybody is, is interested.
That sounds great.
Are they clear for the record?
Clear to me.
Adam? Sir. Uh, eleven A, consideration of resolution twenty twenty five fifty one, a resolution accepting the city Windsor Heights Public Art Plan.
Move to approve.
Second. AJ.
Liz Leggett wasn't able to be here this evening, but she has taken some of the feedback from the prior presentation she gave to city council. We had some follow-up conversations with the community foundation about whether they'd be an appropriate fit to house the funds. That was one of the main talking points, I think, during her presentation. We determined that there'd be a several hundred dollar fee annually to house the funds with them. And given the uncertainty of how much public donation we might receive in any given year, I don't know that that would be the best method for us. The fees might outweigh the, the revenue of going with them. So last city council meeting, we took action to move the Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful funds into a revolving fund, an ERP fund for purposes such as beautification or tree planting. My suggestion is we would do the same thing with any public donations that we might receive going forward, or any grants that we might receive as well, of which this public art plan should help position us towards being able to apply for some of those. Uh, there's a couple other pieces in the presentation that I want to call out as well. Of course, there's the list of potential locations for the public arts. We've added one of those based off a suggestion from Public Works Director Andy on the College Street Bridge. Otherwise, that looks similar to what you saw previously with some updated pictures and renderings of those. Uh, there's another piece in the financing portion that talks about how to fund this from a private development standpoint. The, the general recommendation from the Public Art Plan draft is to require development projects of a certain size. So, for example, potentially commercial projects over a million dollars to get, to dedicate one percent or some percent of their budget towards public art on the project. We've, we've consulted with Aaron on that, and that is something that we could pursue. I think one concern you would hear from developers on it is that that would increase their cost of development in Windsor Heights, so something to be mindful of. I haven't personally seen this in other communities around here, not saying it's a bad idea, just that it would be a bit of a novel idea. But would like some council feedback on whether that's something you'd like to move towards as part of this recommendation in the public art plan, or if you want to consider the parameters of what projects might require that, or think of it more in terms of if there's an active development agreement on a commercial project, we might require some piece of public art to be installed as part of that. But just looking for general feedback, it's listed in the public art plan as a recommendation, doesn't mean you need to take action on that today or in the future, but something to be mindful of and to consider. So welcome any feedback now or later on that piece. Uh, in the plan, it also discusses council would retain all the authority over any final decisions, but it does recommend forming a public art committee of ten to fifteen people, I think, in there. I think, given our small size, we might want to think about whether that's the right number of folks to be involved in any public art committee, whether there's an existing committee that maybe could be folded into the public art committee, such as the Communications Committee or something like that, uh, that might help solicit public interest in being on that committee to tackle communications, public arts, other items like that. Uh, but that is another recommendation included in here as well, is have some sort of continuous public engagement and involvement in soliciting that public art and determining the RFP process for the public art and making those recommendations to council going forward. And then the, the final comments, I guess, on the public art plan would just be if there's any specific priorities of focus areas that council wants to focus on going forward as well. But happy to answer any questions you have. We can still make any revisions to the, the draft plan here today. Liz plans to take any final comments and make those changes and then run off copies for us and formalize the report for our website.
I would, I guess I would say that, you know, I would love to see us, you know, make some investments in this space, but I also understand the current reality of our fiscal situation and our infrastructure needs and all of those sorts of things. I would say as, you know, developments happen, or there's opportunities for us to make investments in that space, that's probably where I see us heading. I mean, I'm open to whatever everybody else is, but um, just realistically, if we can build it into the things that we're doing, just like we did with the park or, um, new developments, I think that makes the most sense at this juncture. But open, you know, if there's an opportunity or somebody has a specific, you know, somebody's going to will us a bunch of money and say, you know, invest in some art, um, I, we'd be, we'd, that would be, would be great. But I want us to, what I would like for this to serve as, really serving as a, um, a reminder to us that this is a priority for us in our community, that we're going to take opportunities wherever we can to continue to invest in, in art throughout our community, and that it helps us be mindful of that as new developments or opportunities arise, and we continue to look for, for those partnerships or collaborations um, within and around the community to do that.
I would just like us to check into grants because, as Lauren and I have said multiple times, you know, there's grants to do, the murals, you can go through Sherman Williams uh, for the paint to do that. So just looking at, um, some cost-saving ways that we can still get the art done, um, but also knowing our, our fiscal constraints right now and the unknowns that could be upon us in the, the next few years. I, I think art is great, but, um, I think we have to be kind of fiscally conscious about how we're spending our money as well.
When it comes to prioritizing, I definitely agree with both three senses. And, um, the mural proposal, locate, proposed location at sixty eight fifty seven, I think that's one that has been talked about for a long time and also has an opportunity for a private public art partnership with the property owner. And so I think within the funds that we have available from Keep Windsor Heights Beautiful and grants and stuff, if there's a way that we can responsibly complete that project, I think that would be a great addition to the community.
What are you looking for as far as a, a committee?
Uh, we can, the, again, the recommendation of the art plan is to form a dedicated public art committee, ten to fifteen folks, I think is an alternative. You could shrink that down in size to maybe a more manageable number that might reflect the number of interested people in the community, or we could incorporate that into our communications committee, or a different committee if, if appropriate. But I think keeping the pulse and some activity and people's attention on it, everybody loves public art, and so I think it might be a draw to one of our existing committees and help bolster the ranks of residents that are participating in that, and provide some avenues for renewed energy in this as well.
I think that, you know, to have a, a little bit less than the, the fifteen or whatever, just given, that's a, a large group for the size of our city, um, maybe we can add a few businesses in as well that could make some comments about, um, what they think or what they have seen, or, you know, now that we have kind of more businesses that are popping up here in Windsor Heights that, um, seem to kind of have their pulse on, on what's going on, then we can add them to the, the committee. And I guess I'm, I don't really care if it is part of the communications committee, if it's kind of a, an offshoot of that, um, but just keep the number manageable so that you can sit on the dais or something as you're, as you're talking versus having the whole entire area here filled.
I think, I mean, I, I like the idea of, I mean, it may be a subset of the communications committee, and it could be a special offshoot of that and figure out who can, wants to be on it. I definitely think having folks from the different sectors would be important. If that makes sense.
Was there general support? Then maybe we'll rename our communications committee to Communications Public Art, or have a subcommittee as part of that communications committee?
Sure.
First for me.
Leave that answered. Most of my questions, I'm not hearing that there's any action desired at this point to establish a policy that would require one percent dedication of development projects, but more of a take opportunities as they come to encourage public arts in those, maybe either through an agreement with them or just looking for creative solutions as those projects occur.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no other feedback, then I think with a few minor changes to the plan, I'd probably look forward to accepting it and finalizing it.
Are you going to bring it back again, or is there going to be?
We can bring it back in the consent agenda, Adam, if you'd like, or you can approve it with, uh, with, uh, staff recommended modifications, get it published and circulated.
I think we can approve it.
There was a couple minor tweaks that were pointed out to me, but I mean, nothing substantial in nature, so.
What's council's preference? Staff modifications or bring it as a consent agenda? Or just as it is?
I say bring it as a consent agenda item, so it's on the record and.
Okay, you have a motion second. Uh, do you want to try?
Yeah, I'll withdraw.
Motion. And Libby, a second.
Eleven B, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty five thirty seven, a resolution authorizing the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between Windsor Heights and Ketchumoy.
To approve, second.
AJ?
Uh, yes, so this was a tabled item from the last city council meeting, uh, at the same day as our last council meeting, a number of communities did approve the twenty eight E for the CBB. Uh, on that date, I expect there's a couple more that have it on the agenda this evening as well. Uh, what we brought back is a continued recommendation to approve that twenty eight E, which would establish the floor as a twenty-five percent contribution of hotel motel tax uh, for all participant communities to the CBB. So that'd be a decrease from the current twenty-eight and approximately a half percent. Uh, however, we include in that a revised supplement agreement for the Windsor Heights. That would be a modification to our existing supplement agreement with them. Uh, and that supplement agreement would affirm the city's intent to continue to contribute to the two-sevenths. So going above and beyond that twenty-eight E, uh, agreement as amended by potentially Windsor Heights and the other communities. That would, I think, put the other communities in a position for the, their ability to move forward, to continue their membership, but allow Windsor Heights to continue to retain its commitment to the CBB at its two-sevenths. Happy to answer any questions?
I would just add, we did talk, um, this came up at MAC, um, as part of conversation, and the, the discussion was just largely around, um, the fact that, um, that maybe next time as these things, um, happen, that we need to make sure that there is either, there were, there is elected presence in the discussion and conversation, um, because there seemed to be a little bit of disconnect, appreciate the work of the city managers on it, but also that there needed to be the, the, the elected in part of that conversation as well. So that was just kind of, that was, that came out of the, the larger general conversation, um, from some of the other communities. So just share that as feedback, so.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Tell me what to do.
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, reports, Ms. Hines.
Yeah, it's been a busy couple weeks. So first and foremost, um, congrats to Chief and Lauren for a successful push ceremony for the new fire engine. So if you haven't been in to see all the fancy stickers and the cool, it was super cool, and hadn't participated in anything like that before, so, um, and hadn't participated in anything like that before, so I thought it was pretty awesome. Anyways, so congratulations, and people should definitely go take a look and want to be a driver of that cool engine. I'm going to get a license, I think. Anyways, attended MAC, we largely spent most of our time doing legislative update. As I think you all know, legislature adjourned last Thursday morning. No property tax bill, no TIF bill. Adam got his clerk bill. The governor signed the fireworks bill today, so that allows or requires cities to allow for fireworks to be set off in every community. You can't now stop it from happening on the third, the fourth and of July and then the thirty first of December, so.
When does that go into effect? Like now or?
Yeah, does it July one? It's probably, well, yeah, it's probably July one. It's probably enactment on July one. Most of, most bills are, which will be just in time for, yes.
Will you get us the updated staffing numbers you're going to need for that change in the fireworks laws for our next council meeting?
Just to be noted, I don't believe there was anybody technically registered in support of the bill, at least not from the municipal side of the equation or the public safety community. So regardless, it's now law. So if anybody has any questions about any of the pieces, there really was not a lot that passed in the last couple of weeks that wasn't already passed by the legislature. So things are now just being messaged down to the governor. She has until either the fourteenth or fifteenth, I can't remember with the thirty day mark of June to to sign bills. So just an FYI on that. I think the league with their new team did a great job this year, especially with all of the work that came along on property taxes, and then you had two people trying to learn and and do all of those things. So we avoided any crazy stormwater legislation or trash legislation or all the, all the those things didn't make it, but so all good. Also, I was able to attend the Central Iowa Taxpayers Association meeting this last week. Art Whitmack actually retired. This was his last event, and there was a program on the proposed, the the tax bill proposal, very good. They're supposed to be sending that presentation. I I thought it was very informative and and great insight from a national organization that gave feedback on the Iowa's proposal. And so just once that's available, I'll share it and send it with, or I'll send it around and share with everybody if it is helpful or provide some insight. I'm happy to to talk about it, too, if anybody wants to to ask questions about that. And then they did identify their new executive director, but I can't remember his name. And then the attended Greater Des Moines Partnership trip in DC with Joseph and Susan and AJ, and I thought we had really great meetings and I'm sure there's other things, but that's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Campbell?
We had our monthly special events meeting on Friday. Friday was a busy day. Drove in the Dart rodeo for elected officials and commissioners, and as the champion emeritus, I feel I represented Windsor Heights well. And rumor has it, I won the Leadfoot Award for the fastest speed behind the bus, behind the way on the bus. Congratulations to the Windsor Heights Fire Department for putting an engine five fifty into service Friday where it nearly immediately had its first call. That was fantastic timing. And thank you to Chief Mies for letting me run wild with plans. My favorite kind of planning is when I'm told, fine, do whatever you want, I don't care. And you said it much nicer than that, but I really appreciate that. And I also want to call special attention to the inclusive way that you designed the truck and all the features and everybody participated in in your fire department, not just the people on the selection committee. I know that there were some specific callouts to people's hometowns and the way fire trucks have the the street signs on them for the New York stations. And so for Price, who's a paramedic firefighter, you know, there's, there's some, some touches there that are really personalized. I think that is very on brand for Windsor Heights. I really appreciate that. And I missed our meeting today for Touch a Truck that's at the end of the month. So I think that probably means that I will be getting the bucket of water dumped on me twice at the splash pad, once for me, once for Susan, but thank you to Susan for always doing the heavy lifting. That's all I got.
Libby?
Thank you. I did a coffee with council on Saturday, had a number of residents stop by, and every one of them said wonderful things about the additions and the and what's going on at Colby Park. One couple in their eighties that live just a few houses from Colby Park said, now when their grandkids come and visit, they don't spend much time with grandpa and grandpa. They're across the street and at the park. And it was just really a very heartwarming opportunity to listen to the people talk some about our park. The roll in, roll in of the fire truck, I mean, what a great opportunity. And and again, it was, it was well attended. I know some people said, well, it didn't look like there were many people there, but there were. They were standing off to the side and excellent reception. That then brought up the next city podcast is going to be about the fire department, and Chief Mies has already said, yeah, let's, let's do that. It was really great to see Chief McCuskey there as well, and we had the opportunity to talk about his dog, Odin. And also, in this packet, the first quarter police report was really well done, and it talked about so many things that are going on that many people don't realize. So congratulations and a nice job on that first quarter report. That's all I have, sir.
Joseph?
Nothing for me.
Recent trip to to DC was a bit of a whirlwind, but overall, it was a very productive and worthwhile experience, like Teresa said. I had the opportunity to connect with some new faces and catch up with folks I usually only see once a year at the DC trip. I was able to attend the Metro Waste Executive Board meeting via Zoom while in DC. Then when we, when I got back into town, I attended the Uplift Community Conversation that was focused on creating stability and opportunity in Iowa's workforce. Lots of valuable information was shared during the meeting, and we received a follow up with a lot of details and contact information, which I am happy to share if anyone is interested. I had a great time at the Chambers Bash Event that was held at the newly remodeled, newly remodeled Ramada Inn. They're still working on updating the pool area, but I highly recommend checking out their new tiki bar and trying the pizza from the new owner of Boss's Pizza. Teresa and I got to take a tour of the airport with all the construction, and she rocked out some other person's boots that were about a size sixteen for her size eight shoe. So that was comedy of the day, just to hear her clogging along with those boots. So got to learn a lot, though, and it was good to finally kind of put, put together in my mind how things are going to be operating, because when they were talking, I still had no idea until we got to see what the airport looked like. So I had a very productive special events meeting on Friday, got a lot accomplished. Again, like everybody else, I had the honor of attending the push in ceremony, such a great tradition to be a part of. Big thanks to Lauren and Chief Mies, especially Lauren for the adorable notes and the student driver magnets. I did put one on the truck, which was later discovered by the shift crew, better late than never. They never got it out, though. They never took the rig out with the student driver magnet on, so.
I did see the student driver magnet was on yesterday when I stopped by, so.
So they must not have taken it off, you know. Looking ahead, there's another busy week. Wednesday morning, we have Women in Government meeting at the Bondurant Library. Evening is our monthly Metro Waste Board meeting. I'm currently testing out the new latches for the recycling containers. I'm happy to report they are absolutely worth the twenty dollars to install by Metro Waste, especially since my recycling stayed put while the rest of the neighbors did not fare quite well. Well, a lot of neighbors in the Windsor Heights community had recycling all over the place today, not us, because the latch was there. Thursday, I'll be attending the Chambers Central Iowa Business Conference, stepping in for Lauren because she has that pesky day job to do, so I'll be manning the photo booth. Few notes, upcoming events to note, we have our ribbon cutting on May thirtieth at four forty five, followed by Touch a Truck at five PM. I think Adam is taking notes on who is getting wet at the splash pad, and I am not one of them. On June sixth, we'll be showing The Lion King for our movie in the park night, starting at eight fifteen. And prior to our movie in the morning, Mayor Jones will deliver the Windsor Heights State of City address from eight thirty to nine thirty at the Community Event Center. That's it.
AJ?
Just note, we're getting a large amount of folks that are coming through, dropping off batteries at our new battery drop off at City Hall, still getting light bulbs as well. And we added today a box for plastic bags, bubble poppers, all that stuff, so we can use that on Forest Court. So pretty much bring all your recycled goods to City Hall, we'll take them. Kudos to Justin for putting that together.
Much new adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Johns? Mike Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa.
Yeah.